So I'd like to call the meeting in order to verify compliance with open meetings, law and notification, adopt the agenda. If we can all please stand for the pledge of the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, three is staff and student recognitions, fall sports and activities recognitions. Dave?
Good evening, everybody, and this is a very fun time of the year. It's hard to believe that we already completed with our fall season and we're moving on with our, our winter season, but the athletic and activities achievements, and it is always fun to help recognize some of the outstanding athletes and coaches that we have here in the district. So I invited as many as I possibly could that had availability, and we do have some athletes here and some coaches. So I actually want to start with our, our volleyball coach, Mr. Coach Jim Swim. He's going to come on up real quick and just give you a brief synopsis of the season and reference any of the athletes that are here and, and talk about their season real quick and your accomplishments right there.
Hi, everyone. I'm Coach Jim. Some of you know me here on the school board. I've coached your daughters. I have three players that are present. If you three wouldn't mind standing up for me, please. These are all returning players next fall. They will all be seniors. This season, we posted seven all-conference players here in the Woodland East, and we also posted at least one all-woodland conference team player who is not, who was also elected to first team. So if we really kind of count it all in total, we have eight. Two of our all-conference players are here. That would be Erin. You can please raise your hand. And then there's Brooke. Sam will be rejoining us next year, looking to kind of take over more of a captain leadership role for her sister, who is unfortunately a senior and leaving our program. Overall, we ended up being regional champions, which is the first time, I think, in four or five years here at Whitnall, which is a great accomplishment. We were not considered to be favored in anything past our second round of regionals. So it was an upset victory. We won in three sets. It was a wonderful match. We also finished first in the Woodland East this season. We didn't lose a set to any of the opponents we played. We were also not picked to win the Woodland East, which is probably the first time in Whitnall girls volleyball history as long as I can probably remember. So that was incredible. Not to mention, we actually were in a three-way tie for first place in Woodland Conference overall, which is pretty incredible. We upset the number eighth-ranked team in the state in order to obtain at least that goal. So not only did we have wonderful players, but we accomplished quite a bit this fall.
Thank you.
We also have some athletes here from our, our girls swim team, so if they could come on up. Yep, you're going to come on up. Swim and dive, yep. And introduce your teammates. That would be greatly appreciated, and we can talk about any highlights you want. Otherwise, I can cover some of them.
Okay, we're from the swim and dive team. I'm Tegan.
I'm Grace.
I'm Camila.
I'm Bella.
I'm Rachel.
And Bella's a diver, but the rest of us are swimmers. Oh, sorry. Camila's a diver and a swimmer. So Bella took first in state this year, and Camila came right behind her in second place. We...
We took fourteenth overall.
Yeah, we took fourteenth overall at state, and we sent two relays and then a couple of girls in individual races. Conference was pretty good. We ended up second overall, and we expected to take third, or we were expected to take third. So that was exciting. And then, oh, at sectionals, we ended up runner-up, and we didn't expect to get runner-up either. So we had a few surprising events at, during the season.
Yes, you guys can sit down. Thank you. As shy as these girls are, they did an outstanding job all year, and to have a state champion and a state runner-up on the same team in diving, and to have them coming back next year is going to be a significant contribution to our team. And Coach George Goody was unfortunately not able to come because of a head coach that he coaches with is actually expecting a child tonight, so he's covering for that person. So unfortunately, they were not able to attend. But girls, thank you for coming. Volleyball girls, thank you for coming. We had a number of other outstanding athletes move on to the next level. Our girls tennis team, again, is a very strong powerhouse in the Woodland Conference East, ended up taking second overall. We did have Jenna Dundas, which is a three-time conference champion, and Autumn Bruno takes second in conference. Both Jenna and Autumn placed, or actually qualified for state. This is Autumn's third time in three years of qualifying for state, and Jenna's two times qualifying for state. And then Autumn ended up placing sixth overall. For football, we were hoping to have the entire football team here because it was the first time winning the conference championship since 2000. Unfortunately, they rescheduled their banquet for six o'clock tonight. So the entire football staff and the, and the team is down in the cafeteria right now, so if you're looking for some food afterwards, feel free to stop on by. But the accomplishments that our football team had this last year were, were phenomenal. There's first-team all-conference. We had Nate Valkersel, Jason Guzniak, Ralphie Vasquez, Anthony Vesula, Elliot Turrentine, Aiden Galindo, and Travis Seidler. Conference Player of the Year was Nate Valkersel in defense and in offense, and Anthony Vesula was the Conference Player of the Year for alignment. We also had first-team all-region for the Wisconsin Football Coaches Association, which was Nate, Anthony, and Jason. Again, Nate was also first-team all-state. So that was a huge accomplishment for football as well. Others that I want to talk about is obviously cross-country. We didn't have anybody qualify for state with that, but they did outstandingly well. We're getting our numbers backing up for, for cross-country, so they're growing as a team, and success is coming from them as well. So overall, we had a lot of athletic success this year. We're expecting even more for next year, and hopefully it'll continue to get better for even the winter as well. So basketball's underway for boys and girls, and wrestling as well, and we do have one gymnast as well. That's part of our co-op. So does anybody have any questions for me for athletics at this time, or maybe any of the girls or athletes that are here, or the coach? Okay, great. Well, thank you again, everybody, for coming. I'm not done quite yet, because I do have a special recognition. Every year, the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association gives the privilege of all the athletic directors to nominate an individual for their outstanding service, and I work closely with this individual for a variety of different things, for setting up games, to helping with events and preparing our fields and so forth for our actual competitions. So this individual's been with the district a long time. He loves the district. He loves the kids, and he puts his whole heart into it, and he is the epitome of we're all-in, because he is all into this district. So I'd like to present this plaque on behalf of the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association. It just says the Wisconsin Athletic Service Award to Mr. Jim Frammy. So if anybody has any questions for Mr. Frammy, this would be a great opportunity. That is all I have at this time, and I look forward to coming back for the winter and giving a detailed list as well for the, for the winter sports as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Onto for the student council report.
Yeah, there you go.
President, Vice President, and Deca Liaison were unable to make it today due to other reasons, but we're here. So, in place.
If you guys don't remember right now, my name is Lauren Bookter. I'm Student Council Treasurer.
I'm a new member of the Executive Board, Ms. Tessa, Mrs. Heine. It's a pleasure to meet you both.
What's that?
Oh, unseated position.
And then I'm Amelia Katakutan. I'm the Student Council Secretary.
All right. Here she got it. All right, I'll watch it. That's all right, thank you. Just give me a little wave. All right, so we have like the privilege of having our thirty-minute Falcon Time class at the end of every school day, and on Mondays, we usually, or we always have a, like, a little lesson that we do. And December second, Monday's lesson, we had a survey and talked about winter sports, as well as just getting some feedback from students, and having the opportunity to like implement like a face-to-face discussion and like taking opinions and like ideas and like ways to make school better, things that people have like concerns about. Being able to do that in person, we find it's like significantly more like qualitative data, I guess, than just doing a survey where, you know, you don't really care. You're just tapping through the survey, answer it as fast as you can. But when we're like sitting down and like having these conversations with students of all grades, it's really, really beneficial to get the information that we want. So we talked about what's to come this school year, and just having like the connection between grades, we find is really helpful. That includes everyone and just gets the new ideas across, so.
That's like one of the big goals that we had coming into the school year, especially among the five of us when we first started. We figured that creating that face-to-face connection where they know who their officers are, they know who represents them. We thought it was really important to establish that connection.
Sorry, we were just dancing at the booster club meeting. I'm Emma. This is Ava. She's a new member on Student Council. She's a freshman.
And then, if you want to go to that, Emma, do you want to talk about it?
Sure. Okay, so we have our new winter event coming up, and we kind of decided that it was going to be called Glow Coming. It's kind of an effort to get more participation, because it caters to more people, because it has three events on it. It has a dance, karaoke, and then Mario Kart, so it kind of, you know, it's special for everyone, and there's different interests. And then we also sent out a survey, which we got results from, and three hundred and sixty-six students responded, and seventy-two point seven percent would be interested in going, so that's kind of really good for us, because attendance in the past for the winter event has been low, but the spike in interest is good for us.
We've been like really thankful that just we've had such an enthusiastic group of kids to be working with us, because I've only been in Student Council this year and last year, but I do notice that like the change in spirit has been like drastic. And the fact that we kind of understand that we might not have like a large outcome just because of all the transitionary period right now, but like nonetheless, we know that all of our kids are really excited to just keep pushing on, and we know that whatever precedent we set forth now will carry on into the future years. So even if we don't get the results, like everybody knows that they have high hopes for the coming years, which is more important to us than us having left. We just want to make sure that we keep that standard up and that those spirits up for the next years, so.
And in addition to that, we were able to have a conversation about what people wanted for their winter event in person during the Falcon Times, as well as taking the survey that like gave a little bit more information about it, and like being able to like talk through it and like get the feedback. That's like really important, because in the past, people are like, oh, we don't want to form a winter dance, and then there's some people that are like, I need to form a winter dance. It's mandatory, like that's just part of high school, but then nobody shows up. So it's like, where do we find that medium? And I think that the communication has been substantially better this year than I've seen in the past years.
And then, so the last thing that we've been trying to implement was just making sure that the people that go to our school feel like they're supported by the fellow students here, and so we've made it a point to try to incorporate attending other events at school within our Student Council. So we've just started this idea. We just started our first one. We attended the girls' basketball game on Friday. So we've been trying to attend sports games and other, other events that don't really have a lot of high student participation, such as band concerts, art shows, other things like that, as less popular sports, I guess you could say, among the student body, because we want to emphasize support, not just in school, but outside of school, to show that these people, that we really care about them and that we really support them, and their extracurriculars. And so a lot of people, I wasn't personally able to make it, but a good handful of our Student Council representatives were able to come to this, to the girls' basketball game, and so from what I heard, they had a lot of fun. And so we're hoping to keep the spirit up within the coming years.
So Lauren, the survey that you talked about at the beginning, what did you do with the results?
So when we get the surveys back, well, for this survey, it was a yes or no answer, because in the past, like the longer the survey is, you know, kids start it and then they don't finish it, or they're just not interested, so.
Well, when you were talking, you were actually talking to them.
So first, we sent out like the Google Doc survey, and that just gave a description of the event, and then yes, would you attend? Or like, would you be interested in attending? Yes or no? And then, so we sent that out prior, and then during the Falcon Time, we were able to open it up, read it to everyone, because some kids just don't check their emails and, you know, the way of life. So we were able to read out the whole Google Doc and talk about it, and then get the responses from other students like in person, and like see what their thoughts and feelings are about it. It's, it's more of just having like the conversation, the dialogue, like selling it, and saying like, oh, what would you think about adding this? And then getting people's responses, saying, oh, I don't know if I'd like that, or that's a great idea. That would make me really want to come, and having like the ability to talk about it in person.
What is, what's the minimum participation in the event are you going to need to make sure that it actually goes on? Because I know you got two hundred and sixty-six. Are you going to need like two hundred, or how much are you thinking?
I went home, mainly had about five hundred people, so I don't know. We haven't really talked to numbers, but last year it was like fifty people, so we don't, you know.
Your advisor has some.
I'm sorry. This tends to cost a lot less than coming, so typically, I'm looking at, if we can have more than a hundred and seventy-five kids there, we're, we're at least breaking even at about that mark. If we can get over two hundred, then we can, you know, start making a little bit of profit to sink that back into some other things that we would do throughout the year. So, yeah, but the more we can get, it's really not about being a fundraiser for anything. It's more about how do we get kids to be more active in the things they choose to participate in at school.
So I guess how, I know you said you went to the girls' basketball game, but how are you getting that out? Are you trying to create like, hey, we're getting a group of people together, a special event, and we're all going to go to like JV wrestling match, or just something really random that wouldn't get that attendance? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, we've been trying to encourage, like, we've been trying to encourage our Student Council members to understand that, like, they may not be like exec board members, but that doesn't mean that they take, they shouldn't take leadership outside of what happens in our meetings. So we've been really trying to get them to kind of take a Student Council position within their friend groups, within their classrooms, so for them to go and say like, this is happening, you know, especially for us seniors who don't have Falcon Time, and so a lot of the seniors like don't know anything about the wi, the winter formal events. So a lot of, I know all the seniors, we've just had to go and talk to them outside of like us standing in front of like twenty-something kids. We have to make, you know, those, those individual connections. So we've been trying to encourage that from freshman year on, to be able to say, hey, this is what I'm doing in Student Council, because I think we've kind of had this attitude among Student Council members where they don't really share what they've been doing or what they're working on in our group. So obviously, we want our Student Council members to attend, but we also say, tell your friends where you're going. Tell your classmates where you're going. So then, hopefully, as things build up, it won't just be, you have to attend this. It'll be, we want to attend this, and it's fun, and we have all our friends coming.
I think it's a really good idea that you're looking for those things that are listening, because even like, if all of a sudden you had like fifty students show up to like a freshman basketball game, that would be really mean a lot of things to anybody that's playing.
When we were, when we introduced it at the meeting, that was something that we brought up, that a lot of us, like on the swim team, you don't get any like student body there, other than like your siblings who go to school with you, you know? So having that, like, we know like from being in those sports, or just like seeing how like, if you get like a group of friends and like go to a game, like that makes all the difference, especially, I went to a boys' soccer game, and like the little student section, it was like, oh, man. And then there was, during senior night, a couple of the other seniors came with signs, and like all the boys on the field, they just looked so much happier, just that like there was representation, like from their friends there.
Yeah, there were like fifteen of us, but we were still doing the cheers, like there were all.
And we were allowed, yeah, and I think that that's super important to like build morale, like make the, make everyone feel closer. That, that I feel like that really, really, really builds school spirit.
And that's not only for like the people who are out there playing. It's also for like kids themselves. It's nice to, you know, go to school events, be more involved in school, you know.
Yeah, especially if it's something different, too, or like, if you've never been to a swimming, you've got to go swimming.
And it's fun.
It's fun, it's exciting.
Our goal for this year for our Student Council members is not to improve the quantity of stuff we do, but we really want to rebuild that quality, just because we feel like, even with this winter event, I mean, honestly, I don't know how well of a turnout we can expect, but just to know that like we're doing something that we know that we've gotten feedback from kids who are interested in going, just to be able to kind of restructure ourselves to fit who we're representing. It doesn't matter if we end up profiting or not. I feel like at this point, I'm just like, we're all just really excited to be able to do something that's so focused on like, like on our fellow students, if that makes sense.
And as Treasurer, if we lose some, we still make some from homecoming and from the other things in the year. It's, if we're breaking even every year.
That's still pretty well.
It's still doing pretty well.
You do better than last year. That's still an improvement.
Yeah.
Communication's really what matters. You guys did a really good job with it.
Thank you.
I like what you guys are doing. Appreciate, especially if you can reach out to the other students to get more participation. That's great. Both in, in, with the council and then in the events and stuff. Appreciate it.
And I'd like to announce that Amelia happens to be the Rotary Student of the Month for December and January, too, from Whitnall.
Congratulations. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You can leave it, Lauren.
That's fine. Thank you. Okay, five is discussion and future action items. A is hot water system replacement of gaskets and clamps. So tonight, we're just going to do a high-level conversation related to the financial piece. Todd is not here. He'll be here next week before we vote, but we did want to follow the two-meeting protocol, so that's why it's coming tonight. Mike, like I said, can talk about the financial piece, and we can get more in-depth about the mechanical stuff next week when Todd is back.
I appreciate that preface, because I always said it as well, like, I'll talk, like, I know something. So the, the basic outline is this, that we have a hot water heating system in our, in our school. The main piping that, that goes out to really this particular area, the gym and the library, it's every, I don't know, ten or twenty feet in that major piping, there are gaskets and clamps where the two, where the pipes meet before they continue to connect onward, and then they break off into some different areas of the school. So those clamps that are happening along that main pipe are failing. They, we put glycol back in the system to heat the building once again with the boilers being shut off. We noticed several leaks coming from the different gaskets and clamps. We've noticed them for, for many years, actually, and what typically has been done is that the custodial staff would simply tighten those up as much as they could to try to prevent that leak from, from reoccurring. But underneath this tunnel, it's very tight, and that area was, was leaking, and glycol is not cheap. It's about twelve dollars a gallon. So when you start leaking that glycol, not only are you not being efficient, but you're, you're literally pouring money down, down the drain. So there are several reasons why these might be failing now. Again, you're talking about a twenty, twenty-year life, and so when they're typically put in brand-new, you're usually at a twenty-to-thirty-year warranty to begin with, somewhere in that range. So around twenty years, but what we've noticed through this process is that really the, the gaskets and clamps probably weren't put to, probably weren't done properly. In other words, there's usually a silicone lubricant that goes around the gasket to kind of protect that gasket. There was no signs of that along this major piping. The pipes were not chamfered, which is a new word for me, weren't chamfered appropriately to fit together and, and thus form a nice kind of suction, and then with that gasket around it. And then they were kind of just the generic, and there wasn't even a warranty on these particular gaskets to begin with. So this project is going to replace the gaskets and clamps that are along this main piping. It is going to create shut-off valves that go to the three different areas that this main piping goes off to, so that if where these gaskets and clamps are hundreds actually, just all in this area, where if those leak, we can shut one off and then keep heating the other parts of the building. So if something bursts in the district office, just Lisa and I are going home instead of everybody, everybody else. So we'll, we'll create some gases, some, some things in there. As then, that, that area is underneath our tunnel. It's a very tight area. You can't weld those together, which is why the clamps were used to begin with. In the rest of the area, clamps were used as well. As those fail, or as those leak, we'll start replacing those across the system. But this particular area, because it's tight, we want to get in there all at once, get that main piping completed and in proper working order before we move on elsewhere. So it's a forty-four thousand dollar project that we got from Just Services. They're on site right now, which is why we were able to get it from them quickly, because they're here for putting the glycol back in. We're going to work on getting a few more quotes, but given that we need to shut down a major part of the, parts of the school in order to make this happen and then get the glycol back in the system again, we need to do this over break. So in order to get a company in here that quick, Just Services is on site right now, so that's what we have. But as we, as we did with the van as well, last month, if you recall, we would prefer to say not to exceed this amount, and then see if anybody else would be able to come in with a lower quote on this over the next couple of weeks. The financing piece, this, this was not in the budget, and thus I gave you the idea of using contingency. However, Friday afternoon, we did get word that we are getting forty-eight thousand dollars back from Focus on Energy for part of the boiler system replacement here. And so that works out like really well to say, hey, we've got this forty-four thousand dollar project that's going right back into our building. We'll take that forty-eight for Focus on Energy and put it in here, and really, we're taking it from now the operational budget instead of dipping in any contingency, which we all know we have plans for. So that's where we stand right now. Any detailed questions on like chamfering, or hot water piping, or things like that? Say them out loud so they're on the video, so then I can replay the video for Todd, who will be here next Monday.
Any questions? So this is, just again, at the main system of it, I guess, having an idea of how many valves we're looking at and how many more I would risk with, you know, just so we can plan in the future more than this project itself, really.
Hundreds. Did he say more than five hundred? There are five to six hundred of these clamps, or gaskets and clamps, all, I mean, they're like every ten to twenty feet. So this particular area, we're worrying about, like I said, because it's the main piping that then shoots off the hot water, the glycol to everywhere else, and so that's why we're choosing this at this time. We're not seeing, we're seeing some drips, like if you go in my office, for example, there's a little glycol drip. We can tighten those up in the meantime, but as they get worse, our concern is that they would also burst. And now we're not, now we're definitely shutting down that area of the building. So as we notice leaks, we replace it that way, but yeah, it's going to be kind of taken chunks at a time, and this is kind of maybe an initial chunk that we need to handle.
And the forty-four thousand includes the valve work?
It does. It does. It won't be, so you don't want to, so we're replacing sixty. So you don't want to go, okay, ten times forty-four thousand is a four hundred and forty. This is much more expensive because of where it is, the manpower. We need to do this relatively quickly. If we're doing it all this summer, that would be a lot easier. This is much more expensive because of where it is, the manpower. We need to do this relatively quickly. If we're doing it over the summer, that would be a lot easier. Uh less manpower to do right away. Um so you're probably talking a hundred thousands of dollars nonetheless to replace everything.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Um one is really about the bid process. So I want to make sure that our customary process is to get more than one bid for the work. And so I appreciate that we're going to have more bids before, so the plan is to get more bids before our meeting when we sign off on this.
Yeah, just to be clear on language, bidding is when there's anything over fifty thousand. Under between twenty-five and forty-nine nine nine nine, we look for quotes. So we would have a company come in and say, hey, we're looking at doing this for sixty of these gaskets and clamps. Can we get a quote on that?
Okay, and so our customary process is to get multiple quotes for work done at the school?
Yes.
Okay, and we expect that we'll have multiple quotes before the next board meeting?
I don't know. No, I do not expect that.
All right, so I just want to make sure that we are following the process that best benefits the taxpayers and um yeah, so if we make it be a not to exceed, that's not the way that you get the best quotes from the most competitive bids. So I just wanted to put that out there as a a general expectation. So and then in, I understand that in the tunnel then, there's no room for a person to get in there and that's why we're using the clamps.
No, people can get in there. They're gonna be doing the work to get the gaskets and clamps around. It's a tight space in which welding becomes very difficult to do and expensive.
My understanding is that welding is superior to clamping. And so then I guess the question is if there are parts that we can weld, so it sounds like this tunnel is not suitable for welding, but there might be other parts that are suitable for welding?
Correct.
And that's a more long-term solution?
Correct.
And then my third question is, what kind of warranty is on our new s- our new clamps? And and it sounds like, you know, when you um have a warranty and then they say, well, you have to treat it perfectly for the warranty to be valid. And I understand that, you know, our old stuff is twenty years old, but then going forward, I'm just wondering what the warranty situation would be going forward if we go with this project.
Yeah, so they, the Just Service who would be warranting this in this particular instance, when they're brand new and they're putting in new piping for the first time, which they did for part of our boiler project. It's a twenty to, it's a thirty-year warranty. I mean, it's long. And well, these were welded together, so it's really a moot point at that. In this particular case, they are looking at how long they think the warranty can be because it's existing piping. They're gonna have to do some unique stuff and cutting it, chamfering it, putting it back together and then putting clamps on it. They're a little less likely to give a twenty to twenty-five, thirty. They're thinking somewhere between ten to fifteen-year warranty on this because it's existing.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Well, what was your comment about it's not uh the not exceed the amount is not the best?
Right, so if we say that we've got X amount, number of dollars already approved and that's in public record, then it's not as easy. You know, where's the incentive to bid?
The only, the incentive would be that you have multiple companies and that they would have to beat other companies. That that would be the incentive. So if they know they can't go above forty-four thousand, else they're gonna lose it. They know that. They could say forty-three thousand, but then we might have two or three other companies coming in. They would still have to give us their I would, you would expect that they'd still need to get their best price, but point taken.
So why do you not expect uh more bids?
I I didn't know. I I didn't know on based on the timing and getting somebody in here over break when it's that tight. I I don't know about the availability. I I would hope to get more bids. I just don't have them right now. We just, we just got this on, yeah, sorry.
Quotes, right?
Quotes, thank you. We just got this on Wednesday afternoon. So that that's why.
So who's reaching out to get those? Todd that's reaching out to?
I would expect either, Todd is not here this week, so I would expect either Sean or Chris to do some work on that.
Make a phone call.
Up past that, yeah, to get some people in here just to take a look and get some more numbers. I mean, it's a double check too on on Just Service. Obviously, Just Service came in low for the boiler project in general, so we know that they have typically done well in getting their prices down, but uh we'll want a couple more eyes on it to see where we fall.
I wouldn't be alarmed, uh being a contractor myself, that no one has the availability to do it. And and since if they don't have the availability, they're not gonna come and give you a quote or bid unless they're, unless they have a relationship with the district. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, we're looking at a very specific timeframe, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of December.
So who's done our annual uh maintenance and service on the boiler system up until this stuff we recently did?
I don't know, John. I'd have to, I'd have to check.
Mention out to them.
It might be Just Service, but I don't know. I don't know. I'll check.
Is this why it's so cold in here?
Yeah, we're at fifteen PPI, am I right? So we're supposed to be at thirty. Yes, that was today. That's what Sean was telling me. The pounds per, that's why it was like, it's it's like air conditioning blowing right now.
Just making sure it wasn't like someone just going in every day and setting it at a fifty?
No, it was, because the the pressure isn't in the pipes right now, so they can't get it.
That's true. Pressure's not in the pipes right now.
Okay, I'm guessing that means some pressure.
Between the two of us, we should be able to.
Yeah, right, right. Not.
Okay. All right, so again, that'll come back next week for a potential action. Um on to B twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one school calendar?
Yep, last two days in the, or last two pages in the packet. Um as I shared with you, this was done um with the Building Leadership Committee. This year, they took even a more um active role in it. Um shared with them, tried to build their capacity and understanding some of the parameters from which we operate. Um a lot of the members are in this, are same from last year, so there's seventeen people on this committee, K-12 teachers. And so they're st- starting to understand instructional hours and all of those things that are needed by DPI, how the calendar works. And so they decided that they wanted to give a survey out to um teachers this year and had a pretty good response rate. A hundred and fifty teachers replied back. They um set up the survey. They brought the results back to the committee at our next meeting, put together what it was, um gave some options of what it uh what things, how we could have days off and that. So next year is unique because we're back to where the, we can start school before uh Labor Day because of where Labor Day starts. So people always think that we have to start school after Labor Day. It's after September first. And so it's just happens for so many years that that is when it falls. But where, if you look at the calendar this year, we're in a very unique um time where it's, Labor Day is as late as it can be. So some questions about when they wanted their August PD dot days. Um I think they heard back from most teachers. They want some consistency like we've had over the last couple of years, like that Wednesday before Thanksgiving always off so they can count on it. Next year, the twenty-third of December is a Wednesday, so do you have that off? Do you not have that off? How does it fall at the end of the year? Some things like that. So the committee really spent some time looking at it, made some decisions. The one I will point out looks very similar to this year's calendar. Um honestly, they did decide they wanted December twenty-third off. And so they knew what that meant later on where that pushed uh the calendar. That was a decision that they made. They also decided they really liked and were very appreciative of this year's calendar by having a PD day the end of October and then a day off for everybody. They felt that was a really great mental health break for everybody. That timing really helped them get through. However, next year is a presidential election and uh Greenfield High School is a polling place for that. And for the presidential election, we normally do our polling place in the bill, the room that we're in now, but for presidential elections, we do it in the gym. And like if you vote here, if this is your polling place, you know that it is extremely busy. Um and the traffic becomes extremely challenging. Um and at our last presidential election was very challenging. We tried to set up some extra things with the city of Greenfield to make sure that our students weren't mixing in with that. Um there is supposed to be even a higher voter turnout for the next presidential election. So the committee decided that they would like to take those two days at the end of October they had this year. That was a Thursday, Friday, and move them to a Monday, Tuesday. So we do not actually have classes for that voting day here. Um that we would have, uh everybody's off on that Monday and it would be a teacher in-service on that Tuesday. So we would have no students here. It would help with the traffic and just any concerns that people might have just because of that. So that is one change that I wanted to point out. That would be unique to this school year. We would probably move it back to the end of October, the following year or whatever. But otherwise, pretty much looks the same um as this year's calendar when you look at when time off is and different things are there. So, yeah.
Built-in weather days?
Yeah, so we have those. Um and we'll talk about those later. We we put into the handbook, we sort of built in what those weather days are with instructional minutes. So it's a combination of, it's not really days, it's minutes. And right now, we have three point one, three extra days of minutes left. Um and so that's, um so we have the same amount moving into next year. But we also have, if we get too many inclement weather days too early, we start taking off PD days and then just teachers make those off. So we have a, um and the teachers on that committee also talked through that and are feeling good about what that looks like. Last year, we were, I think most districts were caught a little off guard with having so many of them so soon. But we ended up not having to do that. There were some teacher makeup time, but we didn't end up having to do student makeup time. So yep, we've accounted for those.
What happens if we don't need all those snow days or snow day minutes?
Nothing.
Just extra school?
Extra learning going on, I guess, yeah. What a shame, huh?
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. On to six items for future consideration. Okay, seven announcements. Um we had a recent graduate who uh was just on the female rugby team. I don't know the school. I just heard about it. Um they just won a Division Two national championship. That's great. And she uh she graduated here, I think, two years ago. That's great. Good talent coming out here. Good.
Congratulations to Spencer on becoming an Eagles.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
There you go.
Ah, congratulations.
I do have to share a story. We had a very successful craft fair here this um Saturday. And when we were done cleaning up our boy, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts help us um in in various ways. But when we were cleaning up at the very end of the day, it was probably about four o'clock and we had an away ba- boys' basketball game. And so one of our Rotarians was in the um smaller gym picking up all the tape from the floor. And he just started doing it. Two boys were in there just shooting baskets, getting ready for the bus to leave. He didn't say anything, but they just came and they started helping him without doing anything. He was totally surprised. Then the custodian came in and just said, hey, you shouldn't be shooting baskets in there. And he said, they're like, thank you, sir. And he came and he found me. He's like, I just have to tell you that. He was so impressed with our students that he didn't even have to ask them to do that. They just did that all by themselves and just having all of that. So every once in a while, we don't always hear all of those good things, just the stuff that, there was no adult around. There was no coach telling him to do that or anything. They just did it because it was the right thing to do. So it's good to hear about those things too sometimes. We didn't always get to hear about it, so.
Okay, on to eight meeting debrief.
Yeah, I've got something. So from last week, I'm a little slow with my meeting debrief, so this applies to last week's meeting. And so I'd just like to point out that discussion is part of the process when we're voting. So when we, something comes up for a vote, we all have an opportunity to discuss it before that vote happens. And so I felt like there was a little bit of motion like, hey, let's just take the vote. And so, but discussion is part of the process and I want to make sure that we acknowledge that.
Anybody else? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Let's take six fifty and let's be back and ready for the working session.